It is six o'clock. I'll call the Sartell City Council meeting to order for Monday, November 27th. Please rise for pledge of allegiance. Counsel, next on our agenda is the agenda review and adoption. I take a motion on that?
No move.
A motion to approve. Is there a second? Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. We have special presentation tonight from Benton County Public Health.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good evening, I guess, with the dark. Everything's messing me up with the time change. Sorry about that. My name is Mariah Klein. I'm a community health specialist with Benton County Public Health, and I am here to talk about what Benton County has recently done with the Benton County Tobacco Retail Licensing Ordinance and some of the updates that we have done to that ordinance. I have been in contact with Anna and Brandon, and we talked about just bringing this to Sartell City Council just to see if there's interest in adopting something similar. So I'll just go over briefly 10, 15-minute presentation to be respectful of time of what we've done in the past with Benton County and then offer some technical assistance as we go on. I've also invited with me Shane Kuzler with the Sartell School District, as well as my supervisor and Community Health Services Administrator Jaclyn Litfin from Benton County as well, and then along with Commissioner Steve Heinand from Benton County too. So we will save some time at the end for questions, comments, and then just to be respectful for time. All right, next slide, please. So how this work is funded with tobacco prevention and control? It is through a statewide health improvement partnership grant, also known as the SHIP grant, that we receive at Benton County. And this was funded, the work started in 2008 with the Healthcare Reform Act. And really what this grant is to do, it works on preventing chronic disease by increasing opportunities for active living, healthy eating, tobacco-free living, as well as well-being. So this is how this work is funded and this opportunity is made available. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to start with some background information on why we do this work. It's all about our youth. Nicotine and tobacco products have profound impacts on youth health. I just wanted to highlight a couple that are really well-known. So nicotine is highly addictive. We know that for youth. And there has been studies that have shown that nicotine can actually lead to other drug use and may increase that risk for drug use in youth who use nicotine or other tobacco products. Nicotine can also harm parts of the brain that are related to learning, memory, attention, as well as impulse control. And we know that's critical for our youth to have those parts of the brain working properly in order to perform in school academically and for lifelong. And then another thing just to note is that each time like a new skill or a new memory is formed in the brain, these things that are strong connections that are called synapses, they are formed in the brain. Now, a youth brain creates those synapses or strong connections at a much faster rate than adults. But when nicotine is used, that has a much larger impact on the youth brain and then slows those synapses in order to learn a new skill or a memory. Next slide, please. Some other ways that vaping or nicotine and tobacco use has had profound impacts on youth. It's really leading to mental health concerns within our youth, such as creating anxiety or depression symptoms. And often youth think that nicotine or the use of tobacco products can actually relieve stress, but that is false. They actually use it, and then it creates nicotine dependence and addiction, and then it just creates the cycle of them continuing to use those products and not relieving their stress. Next slide, please. So a little bit of background information on Benton County and our tobacco retail licenses. Benton County currently licenses 11 tobacco retailers within our county, and those are located within the cities of Rice and Gilman, with the exception of one in Sauk Rapids that is outside of city limits. You can see that one on the bottom. It's Speedway off of Highway 23. And then of those 11 retailers, one is a tobacco product shop, meaning that they only let those that are 21-plus into their location. All right, so some other background information on our ordinance and what has been done in the past. So in 2019, we convened a Benton County Tobacco Worker Group to work on what we were seeing in the schools, and that was just a large amount of use of tobacco products in our schools overall. And so we brought this work group together to implement different policy changes within the ordinance. And what these are included are up on the screen. So we just updated definitions to meet standard state and federal definitions, just to be compliant with state and federal law. We also increased proximity to school, so no retailer can actually be within 500 feet of a school. And that grandfathered in already existing tobacco retail locations. We prohibited sampling, so they cannot offer samples at free or nominal cost. We also required an instructional program for all retailers to go through, and it's by the Association for Nonsmokers, Minnesota. And what that training is, is it teaches each retailer and their employees, whoever is selling tobacco products, teaches them about what the legal sales are, checking ID is just another training opportunity for them to be compliant with state laws. We also increased our minimum price for in packaging for cigars. So we increased it to $2.60 per cigar in packs of less than seven. And that is to, again, make it less affordable, less attractive with products, increase that price so they're not so low-cost, typically at like 99 cents. We increased that up to $2.60. And then we prohibited coupons and price promotions, so retailers cannot use buy one, get one free. They cannot accept coupons. Again, that is to reduce access of these tobacco products. And then last but not least, one of the big changes that also came at the state later on in 2020 was increasing the legal sales age from 18 to 21, which is also known as the T-21 policy. So that's what we did in 2019. Next slide, please. And our county commissioners unanimously passed those changes back in 2019. And we were the 40th community and 9th county to pass those T-21 changes, along with some of the other changes that I'd already explained. And those changes went into effect January 1st of 2020. Well, we all know what happened in 2020 and what that year brought. COVID hit, and a lot of our tobacco prevention and control work had to be put on pause so we could respond to the pandemic. So then moving forward, next slide, please. Throughout 2020, 2021, when schools were closed and adapting to online learning, and then coming back throughout 2021 and being back in person part-time or some hybrid options, we were hearing from a lot of our school partners across the county that tobacco was still an issue being used in schools by our students. So what we decided to do is we reconvened that tobacco work group, and we decided what our priorities were, what our policy changes that we wanted to bring to our Benton County commissioners were. And then we would plan for a public hearing. Now, this work all started in early January of 2022, and then our public hearing was later in September last year of 2022. So this work takes a lot of time over the course of about a year. Next slide, please. So I want to explain and just provide a brief overview of what those proposed changes that we brought to our county board were last fall. In our Benton County Tobacco Work Group, we all decided that these were the most important changes that needed to be seen in a tobacco ordinance. So the first one, that's the biggest priority, was restricting the sale of flavored, including mint and menthol tobacco products, to our restricting the sale of those products for our retailers. And then we also wanted to cap the number of Tobacco Product 21 shops at zero, with of course our one that we had already mentioned being grandfathered in. Our commissioners did not want to put that one business out of business just because of the culture of Benton County and everybody knowing everyone. So we stuck with a cap on zero with them allowing to be grandfathered in. And then last but not least, increased administrative penalties. So what that looks like is we took the minimum fines, first violation, second violation, third violation. We increased first from $2.50 to $500. Second violation, $500 to $1,000. Third violation, $1,000 to $1,500. And then we also added an increased suspension period from 21 to 30 days. So all of these are above and beyond what the state requires, just as another measure to increase compliance with our retailers, making sure that they're following our ordinance and taking it seriously. Now, I will just mention with the top policy change there, with the restricting the sale of flavored mint and menthol, flavored as well as mint and menthol products, we did still allow our one tobacco product shop that already sold only tobacco products to continue selling those products since that's what their business was based on. Next slide, please. So then moving forward throughout the year when we were planning for the public hearing, our public hearing with our county board was September 26th of '22, so last fall. We had nine individuals come speak in support of our ordinance, school staff. We had community members, parents, youth come speak about why they supported this ordinance. Our county board also received 25 letters of support from local and state organizations all supporting our ordinance. And then they also received 151 postcards from both adults and youth from across Benton County that also supported the ordinance. So we received a lot of support all around. Next slide, please. And then our county commissioners unanimously voted to pass all of those proposed policy changes. And those changes were in effect this year, January 1st, 2023. And just something I'd like to really make note of is that we received no opposition at the public hearing due to all of the support that we had from our schools, from law enforcement, from community members, community businesses. We couldn't have done it without them. Next slide, please. So why are these policy changes important? We know that flavored tobacco products are targeted towards youth when they sell products that are bubblegum-flavored, blue raspberry-flavored. They're not targeting adults. They are targeting children, and we have heard that from our school partners. A majority of youth in the U.S. who use tobacco products use flavored products and especially use them as their first product when they are trying tobacco products. And a majority of the youth who are current tobacco users right now use flavored tobacco. Next slide, please. Another thing to note is that youth actually perceive flavored tobacco products as less harmful than non-flavored tobacco products, so they think that they have no impacts on their health whatsoever. And then a majority of youth and young adult e-cigarette users, so specifically vapes, use flavored products. And then I also just want to mention the increased administrative penalties that we added to our ordinance. That was really to increase compliance among our retailers. We had heard from our sheriff's office with our compliance checks that the number of fails was increasing, so we wanted our retailers to take the ordinance more seriously by increasing the fines associated with being noncompliant. Next slide, please. And then what does this look like for the rest of Minnesota? So if you look on this slide, it's a little small, so I apologize for that, but broken out on the right-hand side is the metro area. And so anything in yellow or green is where some sort of flavor policy is implemented, whether that be city or county. And we can see by local data from the 2022 Minnesota Student Survey that these policy changes are working because these policy changes started around 2017, 2018 in the metro area. And if we look on the data on the slide, the percentage of students who vape, whether if they're from the metro or from greater Minnesota, the metro area is actually less than greater Minnesota for using tobacco products. So these policy changes are working. Next slide, please. And then I just wanted to highlight Benton County has been recognized, both at the statewide and nationally, for our ordinance changes that were implemented and passed last fall. So we were highlighted in a statewide Association for Nonsmokers Minnesota newsletter back in October. Another big thing for Benton County is we were actually recognized in the Truth Initiative's newsletter, which is a national newsletter that goes out across all of the 50 states. We were also highlighted in our SHIP grant, our statewide health improvement partnership grant statewide newsletter. And then we were asked to present at various webinars and conferences among the state. Next slide, please. Again, in March, another opportunity for us to present on our ordinance work for other cities and counties that are also interested in implementing such an ordinance. And then in July of this past year, we flew out to Denver to present on our tobacco ordinance and what the process looked like for Benton County at a national conference, which was a big win for Benton County. And then last but not least, we were then highlighted for our national conference that we presented at back in July at a local Public Health Association newsletter. And then most recently in October, I presented at a statewide conference on this work. So it is gaining interest among local communities and across the state of Minnesota. Next slide, please. So what we can help with at Benton County Public Health, and as myself as a community health specialist, we can provide technical assistance, so we can provide, I have brought copies of our ordinance to pass out, what that ordinance language looks like, along with some other information on flavored commercial tobacco products and some other information about how it's affecting our youth. We can make connections to the Association for Nonsmokers Minnesota, which is an organization based out of the metro, but they provide technical assistance across the state with updating an ordinance, as well as the Public Health Law Center, who also helped us with our ordinance process. We can make connections to the staff that we have at those organizations. And then we can also help with community organizing, getting a group together, similar to our Benton County Tobacco Work Group, that would consist of law enforcement, school members, community members, local businesses to work on such an ordinance if there is interest. Next slide, please. And then also attached to this slide, I just wanted to leave some tools and resources. So the first link is our public hearing recording. It's a pretty long one with all the different personal testimonies and support. It's about 45, 50 minutes long, but I wanted to provide that in case there was any interest in watching it back and seeing what support we got from the community. I also attached a electric, electronic version of our tobacco ordinance there for review, as well as those resources such as the Public Health Law Center and Association for Nonsmokers Minnesota, web links if interested. Next slide, please. All right, so there's my contact information. If the Sartell City Council is interested in moving forward or would like to pursue an ordinance similar to what Benton County has passed, I will now open it up for any questions and also any comments from any of the members and partners that I've brought with today. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Counsel, any questions? Congressman Smith?
Thank you for the information. Just curious and not to put Shane on the spot here, but curious if you could take a couple minutes and just speak to what you're seeing in the Sartell schools.
Certainly, and thank you. So I'm Shane Kuzler. I'm the principal at Sartell High School, also a parent in the community and a citizen. So I appreciate and was really excited when Mariah reached out and said this work, or at least this opportunity to share tonight, is coming. So I don't have figures and things to share with you, and certainly not all of our students are using e-cigarettes, but too many are, and absolutely it's a real issue. And then what we're seeing, and this won't surprise anybody, but behavior's changing in order to be able to next do that, instead of the things that they need to be focusing on in the building. And I would absolutely agree in the idea of the flavor being an issue and in that targeting of students or young adults, I guess, in that sense of T-21 now. All of those products she showed, I've seen, unfortunately. And that doesn't surprise anyone, but it is absolutely an issue at school. And again, for our students to learn that, and no different than drugs and no different than what we had to do with cigarettes over time, to help students really learn what they need to do to be healthy. And that takes the adults to do that.
Thank you.
A quick question, follow-up. Do you have a mechanism of delivery to how these kids are getting these products? Is it just 18-year-olds buying it and selling it at school? Are they buying it online? Are they actually just buying it at retail stores without being enforcement? Or how do you typically see the youth or younger kids getting those?
I can speak to that for a little bit. What we've talked with with our Sauk Rapids School District at least is, and Foley, there are a couple locations, retail locations, that are not being compliant with an ordinance, so that is where youth are getting them, or by siblings or friends that are somehow getting them. Another option is also online, just because you can click, yes, I'm 21, and it's pretty easily, if you have access to a credit card, to get those products.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one quick one. With Sartell obviously being some of Benton County, some of Stearns County, are you guys aware of any efforts within Stearns County that's going on? Or even though you guys are Benton County, do you have any of your efforts that kind of flow over into Stearns County?
Yeah, we always partner with Stearns County. We partner with them and Sherburne a lot on different initiatives. We have reached out to Stearns County to see if there's any momentum on a similar ordinance. At this time, there is not, but we would be working in, if the Sartell City Council was interested in this ordinance or something similar, we would work with the Stearns County Public Health Staff with that.
Seeing no additional questions, I think our next step would be to bring this to a workshop and have a further discussion on it. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, we had no one register for open forum public comment tonight. Next up is approval of city council minutes. From November 13th, regular meeting, November 13th, special meeting, and November 21st, special meeting. I'll take them individually because I have item A for a correction. So maybe we'll, I'll make a motion on the correction for the regular meeting first. Anna, page five of the packets, under the conditional use permit. Really, the second paragraph just needs to switch with the first paragraph, where it talked about Carrie presented the findings of fact. I actually vacated my seat prior to that, so just chronological order there.
Yep, so swapping the top two paragraphs underneath the conditional use permit.
Yep, correct. That's the only thing I had. I'd make a motion to approve November 13th, regular meeting with that amendment. Motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. We could take item B and C together or individually?
I can make a motion to approve B and C.
There's a motion to approve items B and C. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Consent agenda. I did want to pull items B and C. Are there any others?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of comments on B and C as well, so would like to add additional comments on B and C.
Perfect.
Clerical corrections when we get to each of them, so you're ahead of me.
Perfect. I'd make a motion then to approve items A through H, with the exception of B and C. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of items A through H, with the exception of B and C, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Item B, Rob?
Yeah, within your packets, under item B, there is a resolution making certain appointments for 2024 below the resolution for certain commission appointments. That was added erroneously. We typically bring this in January of the following year, and the version included in the packets tonight has not been updated. So staff is recommending removing the resolution making certain appointments that was included in your packets.
That's exactly why I was pulling it, so.
All right.
Anyone else have anything on item B? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve item B with the exception of the 2024 council committee appointments. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. And again, we'll have further discussion on those appointments and bring those back in January. All right, item C. Really, the only element on here that I wanted to touch on was the city administrator employment contract, which is the later part of that. And just a discussion that we had at Personnel last council meeting, prior to last council meeting, is when it was brought forward to Personnel, understood that there was a deviation between our city administrator contract and other contracts within the city. And I absolutely want to make sure that we start the conversation with this as not a performance review or anything in particular to someone's contract, but really more of the process and ensuring that we're covering all the bases for the city and for our employees. The, I guess, call-out I'd make is just some understanding of how we got to the point system that we're at. And Anna and I had had some prior conversations about bringing those questions forward to the public meeting tonight. And so I guess maybe that's where we would start, Anna, is the mechanism for grading or evaluating those points?
Yeah, sure, Mayor, members of the council. So I actually went back to track this. This would have been before my time. So December 16th, 2019, the city approved the Compensation and Classification Study, which was completed by Baker Tilly, who is now Springstead. That was a consultant on study. As a part of that study, which is the first requirement of pay equity with the state of Minnesota, you are required to establish a point system. So the point system that Sartell elected to use at that time and approved on December 16th was the SAFE system, which assigns points to all of our job descriptions based on training, experience required, level of work, human relation skills, physical demands, working conditions and hazards, independence of actions, impact on end results, and supervision exercised. And so each of those categories has an amount assigned to it. The consultants then go through, rate each position based on the job description established at that time, and then assign points to it. And so in that report that was approved on in 2019, it approved the city administrator of the highest point value in the city at that time at 850 points, followed by the police chief at that time at 730. Since then, with not rehiring the community development director role and assuming those duties underneath the city administrator, that point total is now 900 points, and the police chief 730. So roughly 20% difference between the top city administrator classification and then the next level of the director role. And so, again, that process was done back in 2019, sets it up in a final report, and our full pay scale is set off of those points and off of that SAFE system. And then the SAFE system essentially is the point system that's used for our pay equity reports. There was one that was actually completed in 2020 before I started, and then in 2023, April of this year, actually.
And when did we, I guess, when did we recognize we're out of compliance, maybe it would be the term?
Yeah, so in, actually in April, when we submitted our initial report to the state for pay equity, at that time, we were not out of compliance, based on, at that time, I was the only employment contract. We did not, we were still working through the process for approving a new police chief, and we did not have any contracts beyond mine at that point. So April 19th, it was submitted to the state. April 24th, then, is when we actually officially approved Chief Ciliard's agreement. And then since then, approved two more additional agreements on September 11th for our deputy chief and our captain, at that time lieutenant, contract. So now we have three total employment agreements in addition to mine that would put us out of compliance. And so the next step from a pay equity standpoint, which we can go down this road, or we can correct it before we go down this road, is to resubmit all of the findings of all of these agreements and receive the noncompliance, or we can correct them before we submit them. But essentially, pay equity requires that whatever your highest point positions are for employment, that your compensation and benefits match, and that it's gender neutral. And so an additional category within this situation is the fact that the female city administrator role that has the highest points for the city has a lower compensation package in totality than the three male contract employment agreements that were approved after that initial pay equity report.
I guess, point of clarification, all three, or was it just one?
Well, the captain and the deputy chief match the termination benefits, and the police chief is above the termination benefits of my employment contract. The deferred compensation, the deputy chief and captain are below mine, so in that area is in compliance, and is the same for the police chief.
And when is this due back to the state?
So the next step would be to resubmit and to get their findings on these new and to to get their findings on these new employment agreements that were approved, since the report that was submitted in April did not include any of these. Technically, our pay equity report that we do every three years is due January first of that year. So our pay equity report was actually due January first of twenty twenty-three. We submitted it in, I think, February, March-ish, when we waited for Kerry to be able to come on board and be able to assist with some of that. And so now the timeframe would be to get it in before January first of twenty twenty-four, which is the next reporting timeframe for people that would be under the next three-year window, if that makes sense. So our window, our three-year window would have technically been due January first.
Right, and we were a month behind that. We submitted in February, and we won't do a new, we won't be required to do a new report for two years now, right?
We won't be required to do a new report, but we'll be required to submit the changes to these employment agreements by the next report cycle, which is January first.
Okay, that's our, so January first is our deadline to have in compliance?
Right, or to submit the employment agreements.
In order to do so, they'd need to be, well, our.
Yeah, you could submit them not in compliance, and then, yeah, yep.
How does the, so we talked a little bit about the SAFE system, pointing scale. Sorry. How does that tie in with the Springstead pay study that's also part of item C, where we went through with union negotiations? We've compared every role against same role in similar-like communities? I guess that's where my that's the conversation that I was hoping to have at Personnel Committee is help us understand how we should think about two, in my thought, differing roles. A chief of public safety, whether it's police or fire, and a city administrator. You shared with Personnel a hundred and eleven-page document from the state that I was able to get through, and I think Councilmember Smith was as well. And they talked a little bit about comparing apples and oranges. Help us, maybe for the rest of the council that wasn't privy to that, help us understand how those all compare.
Yeah, so the the SAFE's point system is essentially a methodology. In in public government, every public entity is required to follow the pay equity system set by the state of Minnesota. Every state has a similar system. Every state varies a little bit on the requirements, but you're required to have a point system. Ours is the SAFE system. Some governments use HAES system. There's a few different models out there, but in twenty nineteen, Sartell elected to follow the SAFE system, so that's our particular system that we use. The the compensation study, I I won't even call it a compensation study. The market study that was completed by DDA, so not completed by Springstead, it was a purely market rate study. It had nothing to do with the SAFE system and purely comparing job duties against the market. And so those market reclassifications were due to market adjustments for those particular positions that were identified when compared to the, to our peers, but they were not a part of the SAFE's point system. That SAFE's point system is our methodology for grading any new position. So anytime a new position is created, myself, and then usually Rob or Kerry will second check the, we have a scoring card that we have to score through all of those categories that I mentioned. So really, the intent behind pay equity, when you talk about the apples, the oranges, is that, and this was developed long ago, is that you're trying to create gender-neutral pay systems. So it's based off of, purely based off of a point system that is designed ahead of time by a third-party consultant. And in fact, when you submit the pay equity report, you don't even include names. All it is is, you know, employee A, pay, full benefits package, and then if they're male or female. The intent behind it is that there are roles that are typically held by females, or historically have been held by females, and there are roles that are historically held by males. For example, law enforcement would be a field that has historically been held by males. So you can't compare the roles of those in an equitable way without assigning a point system to it. It would be difficult to say that job has a value that's higher than this job without tying it to any sort of gender bias. And so the system was established to say, we're going to tie it to a point system that's completed by a third-party consultant. That deems the value of the of the role, and then that value of the role is what needs to be followed for complete compensation packages.
Anyone else have questions?
I guess I have a question on contracts. So how typical are contracts in a city? It sounds like we now have four. We didn't used to have maybe any. How how prevalent are those in cities, and do we have a process that would maybe look at this from a, I mean, I heard you mention kind of more of a a leaving-type severance-type thing of, you know, I know we have different calculations within my world that basically like one month for every year, or should we establish some of those so that we avoid some of these things in the future?
Yeah, I think, I mean, Brandon, you might be able to speak to some of that as far as the prevalence of these contracts. I would say as our political environments have changed, and it's been, you know, there's been civility and volatility in public sector roles, they're becoming more and more common, especially common for police chiefs and county, city superintendent, every superintendent has one. That's been established many, many years ago. Local government has been a little bit behind the times on it, but it's become fairly common, if not a requirement, that most will have going into a role. Would you, based on your experience?
Yeah, I can obviously speak to police chief a little bit deeper, but essentially, the first piece of advice I was given is don't don't go there without a contract. And that's, I mean, you can see the volatility in law enforcement in particular, but as Anna highlighted, you know, law enforcement, and you're overseen by an administrator. I had some pretty lengthy discussions with some administrators I knew too, and very much common. And I think on the city side of things, there's an added benefit. A lot of times, going to a contract does keep from having to create further union bargaining units, so there's a deeper savings to the city to have an individual contract than creating, you know, like a department my size I came from, there's four bargaining units in one department of the sheriff's office. So this is a way to, of cost savings. It was kind of a win-win, or can be, if it's negotiated well on both sides.
Yeah, and to follow up on that, you know, I think from executive-level positions, it's it's fairly, become very common in in local government and has been in other areas of public sector. I do think, I do think, and will make the recommendation at the next council meeting with our personnel policy, that we should hone in on some language in our policy around restricting who these employment contracts are, who can qualify for them. So as Brandon mentioned, confidential employees, you know, that are, that assist us from a union bargaining standpoint, executive level seem to make sense. Law enforcement is a very, very common one.
Exempt, any exempt employee, you know, typically who's not making overtime, stuff like that is really common.
Common. So that would be language that we'll make as a recommendation with our personnel policy coming up, especially as we're we'll be walking into the recruitment process. I mean, later on the agenda here, we'll be talking about the recruitment process for another director. And so, you know, that that precedence has been set now with four contracts, so, you know, making sure we're prepared for that, going into that recruitment of how we'd like to see that. I'm not sure how many public works directors out there have contracts. You see it more in law enforcement and administration.
Particularly, it's the, you know, severing employment without cause piece of it. Chiefs of police in particular, and I know administrators, that zero to one year, six months to a year is more common of a severance package for there. I I almost went to ask a year when I came here too, but I honestly, like, the team environment here really spoke to me, like, being comfortable with a more common six-month period, so.
And and as I've thought about it over the last two weeks, it's the chief of police position, I can see from a, something goes wrong with a patrol officer or any officer. And as I've saw in other communities, they're instantly coming after the police chief role, right? And and most of that from a chief of police is without cause, so makes sense. I don't want to keep us from getting to compliance. Council, most of my concerns related around, just, it came to us last council. I had asked the Personnel Committee over the weekend if, hey, what's the urgency of this? Can we have further discussion, whether at Personnel or even in a workshop? Because it's a lot to understand. And only two of us serve on Personnel Committee, and so we've had the depth of knowledge, or attempted to get the depth of knowledge. And so I want to make sure we're all aware of our non-compliance and what we need to do to get into compliance. And I guess that's why I brought it forward tonight for discussion. Rob, I do recall you mentioned you had some something on C.
Yeah, just one small clerical error that needs to be corrected. A stepping grade was transposed for Alex, our public safety specialist. I've included the corrected employee stepping grade on your desk. So rather than Alex at one seven in the packets, it should be a six-two. So staff is recommending the corrected employee stepping grade worksheet.
I think, again, one other question I had was just, and maybe we can do this at a later workshop or whatnot, but being new, just understanding the pay grades and you know, paying within a pay grade, or sometimes those overlap, even though they're different numbers, and someone may be higher in a pay grade. And so just having some context around that, not having heard any of this before tonight's packet would be very helpful, just for me to get my head around of, you know, how are we paying from all of those positions that are on here, and better understanding kind of how that works?
Yeah, absolutely. I can, I'm just making a note for myself to send out that final pay study report, and then also the twenty twenty-four pay scale, because obviously, the pay scale that would be in that final report is now a couple of years later. And so it adjusts every year, given the COLA calculation. And to your point, and I think that is an important point to make, is that so it's the total compensation package for pay equity, and not necessarily, like, you could be on a on a pay grade and step and have more years of experience, and, you know, so you have to look at it in totality, that depending on where you're at on the scale. So in this particular situation, it is not salary in a, in a, in a true sense, that is the item that's out of compliance. It's the severance package piece. Termination benefits is, I think, what's titled in our agreement, and then the deferred compensation retirement. Because, to your point, you can be at different points on that pay grade and scale, depending on where you are at on a step, and years of experience that would adjust that. And the pay equity report does call out that if you can show that there's a reason for ineligibility because of something like that, that you started at later dates, or you're further on the scale than the other person, or, for example, law enforcement does collect a higher para rate, which is a state-mandated higher rate, that's a eligibility for being on different levels.
I would just encourage then, as they kind of work through, and what you just said was, you know, as we get through more of these contracts, obviously, you're saying they're going to become more prevalent. We all know today's hiring market isn't as fun as it used to be. It's hard to find good people and get them to move. So a lot of negotiations, when you bring in new people in, will always impact this, right, of really trying to attract talent to our city. And so as you work through some of those things, I think it would be important for us to put some of that stuff into that policy of like, hey, these are, these are our metrics that we use for, you know, whether it be one month for every year, minimum of six months, never to exceed the highest point person's contract, or something along those lines, so we don't find ourselves in that position with a future contract.
Yeah, that's, I mean, reality is, we've been out of compliance since about June, right? And so.
Well, yeah.
Again, that's in front of us tonight is something that, to me, feels like we we need to hurry up and get it corrected, and reality is, we've been out of compliance since June, and so I don't know how we ensure we recognize that in the future. If we go out of compliance, how do we recognize it right then and there? The last item I had was, I noticed the, and we had some discussion on this at the Personnel Committee as well, but there's an adjustment in the contract specific to annual review. Is that part of compliance as well?
It's not. I just addressed that based on our conversations of making sure we call out that there's an annual review process, and then that as long as both parties agree to it, it could be done through a Personnel Committee review. You, we're required to allow employees to request performance reviews to be open to the public or closed to the public, but as long as both parties agree to Personnel Committee, that that could be the process, which is, hopefully, I captured what we had discussed in that meeting, and if not, we could take any suggestions for editing that.
I think that was the, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that was the intent of it, is.
Yeah, there is a suggestion too, that there is some sort of merit increase based on the performance review, which would have never been done. We didn't, we don't have a metric for doing that, so I think it cleaned the language up.
Yeah, and I guess the question I would have is, does that need to be in a contract, or is that something that the council? By statute, by state statute, an employee has the opportunity to close a meeting for a review. And so I guess I look at that as, hey, we're, we're opening the contract for other items. If if we're out of compliance, I'd love for it to just be focused on fixing the compliance now and continuing the conversation. I don't know that we want to contractually set how a performance review is done, knowing that each employee has the ability to make it a closed meeting, should they want to, right? But there's certain future councils that may want to have that as a full council review. Others may want to push that to a Personnel Committee, and I think that's probably ever-changing. And putting it into an employee contract, to me, feels a little bit restrictive, probably on both sides into the future. And so I'd love to have that continued conversation, if that is not a pressing item for compliance.
Yeah, you could strike all of it and just, I mean, I think all of our contracts at least state that there will be a performance review annually, and you could just end it there.
And that's what yours currently.
Yeah, yeah, except for it does have that goofy language around merit, but I think you could clean that up by just saying there will be an annual performance review, period. It is an expectation in our Personnel Policy anyway, so.
Council, any other items? On item C?
So you're suggesting that the change is taken out?
I'd suggest that change specific to the performance, annual performance review be taken out, knowing that we would, we would host a performance review, and the employee can make that a closed session at their will. I just see it as too, in the future, too restrictive to have it in the employment contract. If a future council, as a majority, wants to have a closed session for a performance review of the city administrator, it would actually violate the employment contract on file at that point.
I'm just, so it's it's saying that the default is it's a closed meeting with the full city council. The meeting can be requested to be opened by the city administrator, but that would be at your request only. And then if agreed upon by all parties, the annual review may be completed by the Personnel Committee. So it does kind of provide flexibility based on what the employee is most comfortable with.
Yeah, I just, again, I don't know why we'd have that in a specific contract. We don't have it in the others. And if it's not pressing tonight to get into compliance, I'd love to have further conversation on it to make sure we're going about it the right way, is would be my own take on it. Any other thoughts on it?
I guess then, who, if you take that language out, who determines how the city administrator's review is conducted in the interim?
We have a Personnel Committee meeting next, before next council meeting, and I think that would be a great thing to have on the agenda, that we could continue the conversation through. And we could, Personnel could make a recommendation of how it could go this year, if time doesn't allow. Or we'd make a recommendation going into council for a contract update.
I see what you're saying. I also see that this is her contract, though. So if she were a new employee, she'd be negotiating these points with us. So I think if it's, it's a little, I don't know, I guess I'd look to the rest of the council for your feedback. I'm more inclined to include the language as is written today, but.
Perhaps a compromise, because I think from what I'm hearing Ryan saying is, is making sure that we're offering enough flexibility for for future councils. And then also knowing that that the state statute which is cited in there has to be followed. So maybe the last line, you just say, if agreed upon by all parties, the annual review may be completed by the Personnel Committee or another method. Because then that way, a future council Because then that way a future council, if they have a different method that they might prefer, um, it might be a different committee. Or it might be the full council, as long as both parties agree to it, it can be done by another method.
Yeah, I guess the reality is the council is who would, as an employer, would decide the method of review. The employee has the legal opportunity to have that a closed meeting. Right? And that's what state statute affords each employee the opportunity to do that. What this is saying is, hey, it will be a closed meeting unless the employee wants to open it. And so I see that as, as restrictive to future councils versus following what state statute allows already. To say, we will do a employer review, council can determine if that is a full council or Personnel Committee. Employee has the ability to say, we'd like that, I'd like that as a closed meeting or keep it open. That's following state statute.
Let me, one point of clarification, um, the council does not get to dictate how a review happens. It is the responsibility of the full city council, so always, unless it's agreed upon that it's someone else. So I report to all five of you and, uh, my review is to all five of you. So it's not, that's, that it's always the full city council unless, um, it's agreed upon that there'd be a different method. Um, just to clarify that point, so it's. The, the state statute requires that it's available for a closed meeting if requested. Otherwise, it's a open meeting because it's the full city council that does the review. Um, unless it is a, agreed upon that it be a different method. Um, but otherwise, in all situations, it should be the full council.
Yeah, and the, the way I read it, excuse me, um, where it says discussed by the full city council and closed meeting per the statute. Um, I, I don't personally have an issue with how it's stated. I feel like the city council has the discretion. And maybe the need to be clarified, the meeting can be requested to be opened. Is that request saying that it's going to be open or is that request saying the city council has the right to not open it?
By state statute, the city council doesn't get to decide that. The individual employee gets to decide if it would stay open or close. In this verbiage, it says it will be closed unless the employee wants to open it. And so maybe, maybe we're splitting hairs there. Um, again, when I read through it, I just, it feels restrictive to future councils. If there's already state statute in place, it seems duplicative. To have it in an employee contract.
And again, being new to this process, what, what has the process been in the past? Is it Personnel Committee to like a workshop, to full council, and then the administrator chooses open or closed? Or what has the process been in the past?
It's been a variety.
Variety.
Um, in past administrator, um, council would, would provide feedback to the mayor to deliver that. Um, I think we did that one year. Uh, there's been maybe a year through COVID where there wasn't a performance review.
I think one year we did a closed meeting as a performance review with a full council. So I think that's part of my desire with this contract is that that gets spelled out so that there is clarity. Both for my sake and future council's sake, that it's spelled out that, hey, this is an expectation. And I, I would anticipate going forward, some of the monitoring reports would be a part of that as well. Ryan, to your point, maybe it's just, it's, it's flipping the words here to be of, um, but will be formally discussed by the full city council in an open meeting. The meeting can be requested to be closed, flipping the verbiage there.
Yeah.
Yep.
And, and again, I'm.
No, I.
I know there's a football game in ten minutes, and so I, uh, we're still on consent agenda. Um, would have loved to have this conversation in Personnel and Personnel to make a actual recommendation on this. But, um, however, the council, I'm not going to continue to belabor the point, so.
Yeah, I, I think what Anna said there about flipping it, um, open versus closed would help some of that. Um, I think the initial part gives city council the power, um, to kind of, I don't want to use the word dictate that kind of how it's done. But I think switching open versus closed, um, meets both desires, in my opinion.
I'll make a motion to flip o- open.
Um, it would be, it sounds like there's maybe different review processes that we've had. So probably wanted, want to talk a little bit about that, and that's where a workshop might help of, hey, how do you want the process to go? From, you know, the, the survey perspective to who it flows to and how it flows, how the feedback is given. Again, maybe some of that is in play, but I, I think you just said it's kind of been sporadic. And so I think looking at this more than just the actual delivery of the review of, you know, what's the process that leads up to the review? And so that we're all on the same page, it might be good to have a conversation on that. But, um, just so we get some consistency and a full kind of totalitarian kind of outlined process. And then how the contract reads today probably may stay the same, but, um, that would be my suggestion.
And it's, we're certainly working towards that. Um, I'll make a, a motion to approve, uh, as presented, item C. With the exception of changing open and closed in the city administrator contract.
I'll second.
A- and making the edits to the.
And edits to the one Personnel Alex.
I'll second the mayor's motion.
Can you repeat the motion? I'm sorry.
Um, we are adjusting the employee Alex as, uh, Rob presented. And then we are just simply changing the two words, open and closed. So the meeting will be open with the administrator having the ability to close it.
Thank you.
Everything else is as presented. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Uh, just to comment, I appreciate the information you did include in the packet because I think when we met with Personnel. Um, pay equity is something unique to public sector. So, um, you know, we had kind of requested just the background and the information on the statute, and I appreciated having that information. And I, I hope it helped council to kind of get up to speed on what, um, some of the major differences are between private and public.
Any other comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That carries. We have, uh, two public hearings tonight. Uh, first one is RFQ process preliminary and final plat of Champion Platt.
Mayor, members of the council, uh, for your consideration tonight is the approval of the preliminary and final plat of Champion. Uh, the total plat area is just over a hundred and sixty-seven acres. It includes two outlots, six lots, and right of way for, uh, Roberts Road and Riverside Avenue. The zoning for this plat includes both light industrial and single-family residential. Um, the proposed preliminary and final plat as submitted, um, has been reviewed by city staff and engineering. Uh, the proposed plat satisfies requirements set forth by the city subdivision ordinance. And staff recommends approval with the following finding of facts, uh, required for plat approval. The proposed preliminary plat conforms to the requirements of this title and applicable zoning district regulations. The proposed plat is consistent with city comprehensive plan, land use studies, and is compatible with the adjoining lands. The proposed plat does not constitute a premature subdivision. The physical characteristics of the site are such that the site is suitable for the type of development. The plat complies with the applicable plans of Stearns County and the state of Minnesota. The plat is not likely to cause environmental damage or health problems. And the completion of the parcel can be achieved in a manner as to not cause undue economic burden. All applicable permits have been applied for a- and, or have been approved. Uh, there are a few additional conditions. One, that the site plans must be submitted and approved, which conform to the, uh, applicable zoning districts. Um, and the standards for the developments for that site, standards for those specific projects when they come forward. Unless the property is rezoned. All comments by zoning, engineering, police, and fire must be resolved to the satisfaction of the city. Uh, by written notice to proceed, um, with future development. And the developer owner will be required to obtain an MPDS Phase Two and PCA construction permit, if applicable. Um, the development of plat is not subject to storm, trunk, water, sanitary, or park dedication fees. As it is city-owned property. Uh, once the outlots are final platted, development fees may be required, uh, for storm. Water, sanitary, and park dedication fees. Um, in addition to the preliminary and final plat approval, uh, we'd also be looking for approval of the RFQ process. To assist the city in selling portions of the property located within this particular plat. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Council, any questions before we open the public hearing?
Just one, April. Um, how did you guys determine the lot areas and sizes?
Yeah, so there are six, uh, proposed lots and, and two outlots. Um, one lot is located on the south side of the future Roberts Road right of way, so that one was separated from the main chunk. So that was platted as a separate lot. There are three lots platted adjacent to start to the Public Works facility. Um, those will remain Public Works area for now. Uh, but they were platted as three different lots with the potential to sell them in the future if the city so decides. And then the other two lots are located on the west side of Fourth Avenue. Um, and those were platted, again, because they're separated by that roadway. Um, they're platted as two separate lots for ease of, um, sell if the city so chooses. Um, the two outlots, there's one outlot that encompasses the landfill, uh, that's on this property. And then all remaining property is, uh, located within the other outlot.
Thank you.
Is, April, is there a better picture to show everybody that may be listening or in the audience today? Instead of me trying to scroll through.
You've done a great job though.
There isn't a, I, I mean, looking at the plat documents, there isn't one that encompasses all properties. If you, if you zoomed out and looked, so if you stop right there, Rob, um, that inset A shows the two lots that are located on the west side of Fourth Avenue. Um, and inset B shows the one lot on the south side of Roberts. Um, that lot abuts the adjacent, single-family residential. To the south, and then, um, block two up on top includes three lots. There's a small sliver on the north end adjacent to the Mobile Home Park. And then there's two lots that follow that existing lot line. So the east or back lot line of the current Public Works lot, um, if you follow that lot line directly south. That would split block two into two separate lots, and then that sliver for the third lot. This figure here, outlot B is the landfill property. Um, we did carve off property between the landfill and Fourth Avenue South. Um, that was outside the jurisdiction of what the landfill would have to be that could be, uh, potentially sold and developed in the future. We did retain an access easement for the landfill. Um, outlot A continues on the east side of outlot B or the landfill. And then continues north, which would have been in the figure shown right before this.
I know you have a little carve-out at the top or in the northern part of that, uh, for some non, I guess my term would be non-conforming. Um, I know we had some down at the southern part as well, uh, but we see that'll be corrected.
Um, so, uh, planning staff has been working with adjacent property owners, both on the north lot line and the south lot line for encumbrances. Um, which means there are structures or fences, sheds, those sort of things that are, uh, located on the city property. Um, so those, we'll continue to work with those property owners on to, uh, fix.
Council, any other questions before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the RFQ process preliminary and final plat for Champion Platt, please step forward. And please state your name and record, or name and address for the record.
My name is Kathy Chase.
If I could have you, just go to the microphone so the people online and watching on TV can hear.
Okay.
My name is Kathy Chase, and I live on the Tenth Street. I can't see where it's at on there. I don't recognize it, but we are butted up against the field behind us. And we got a letter about a month ago saying that, uh, a piece of. Our is encroached on the city lot. And so I'm here because I have the desire to buy maybe thirty or forty feet. From my property line into yours. And so I'm here because I have interest in buying it because it's, I've been there over, well, almost, well, be twenty years here. And all of a sudden, it's like I got a letter saying I have to move my shed and the swing set, which is huge. Within like ten days, and it was like, there's no way. So then I called and I think I talked to a John, and he said for me to call and talk to Carrie. And she gave us until, I think, May first to move all of our property. But since it's not developed, I'm hoping maybe we can buy a portion of that. And, and keep it for ourselves. So that's my interest is I want to buy like thirty to forty feet of your property now. So I don't have to, um, I didn't realize it was all that was yours. Then when I put my stuff on there, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else was wishing to testify, please step forward. And just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Marwa Asif. Um, we're neighbors, so that Tenth Street. So I believe that's inset B, block three is kind of the area where we're living. Um, and I think it's echoing what Kathy had said is that we, I think, and it's a collective understanding in the neighborhood that we hadn't known. And so not only is this like swing sets, it's like, these are where like my younger siblings go and play, right? And so seeing where that line is has been really important too, like at least my family, because we farm. And so my mom has been teaching my kid, not my kids, her kids how to farm and all of this stuff. And so it might not seem like a lot, but that thirty to forty feet as a family, like in our backyards where we're already cut off. With this like huge tree line, I don't know how to explain it. Once you see it, you'll understand. It's carrying off just past that, so that thirty to forty feet, like having swing sets where all the kids come and play. Or having a farm where we're able to give like all of these like vegetables and stuff to our neighbors. And so it's not only like a playable area, but it's almost community where we can, we can use that space to give back to our community and our neighborhood. So making sure that if it's available to purchase, that we would love to, or if we can just open it up for us to have that. Yeah, that's about it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So I'm Brian Frank, and I also live in that neighborhood. Um, we would also be interested in buying back thirty to forty feet if that is, uh, if we're able to do that. So I think, uh, there are twelve houses in that area. I think there's fourteen, two are unoccupied. Um, so far, we've talked to six of the neighbors. And, uh, every one of the people that we've talked to so far are interested in that. So I'm curious, if we get everyone that would want to do that, would the council be amiable to, to listen to us? And, uh, perhaps, uh, allow that to happen? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tim D. Murray, and I live on Riverside Avenue South, so I do not live in that neighborhood, and I do not have my shed. Uh, if I'm following this correctly, there's eight separate sections, either lots or outlots, and two zoning categories. Could you just speak to which lot and outlot or which zoning? I'm just curious. I wasn't able to learn enough about how to read a plat, to read that.
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, lot or block two, lot one. Um, so the lot adjacent to, uh, all of the properties that have spoke is, uh, zoned, single-family residential. Um, all other property is zone light industrial.
So April, to clarify, the, the block three that's on the screen right now and that is being referenced by Tenth Street South. That parcel is the only single-family residential zoned, correct?
Okay.
Anyone else wishing to testify?
Hello, my name is Diane Durkis. I'm farther down the block from this group. I'm more at the corner. I'm 109 10th Street South. And I would also be interested in purchasing some of the land if made available. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Rob, there's an aerial shot of the, with the structures in it. Can you pull that up for us?
Which part, the water, or the wetlands donation?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think one of these has a good representation of it.
Probably one more.
There you go.
Yeah, there it is, down below.
Insert P. Oh, no, Block Three, yeah. Third and final call, anyone wishing to testify before we close the public hearing and have discussion?
My name is Jill Eubanks, and I also live on the 10th Street South. And just wanted to reiterate that I would also be interested in buying back certain feet if that's available to us. Also, the city, I think, must have just, it's been vacant for about five years where there's been no activity in that field whatsoever. And I think it was, this is the first year that the city came, and actually, I believe it was the city mowed, you know, because it was just thistles and, you know, burnable stuff. And if anybody was to have a, you know, a bonfire in their backyard or anything. So I appreciate, you know, you guys mowing that, and hopefully you have plans to continue to, you know, take care of that property that you owe, but it would be a nice consideration, I think. Most of us have almost considered, you know, to a certain degree, you know, that almost our property, I guess, not knowing exactly where that was and what the egress and everything. But yes, I would just like to put my name in the hat for, for buying property too. Thank you.
Thank you.
I might as well go on record too. Yeah, my name's Lindy Jones.
My name is Tony Kruger.
We're neighbors.
My capacity is a fellow neighbor and resident of 10th Street South.
And I'd just like to go on record that I would be interested in purchasing property too.
And our family as well. I think it's fantastic to see the showing from our neighbors and down the street. I think you can see that there's quite a bit of interest in this, probably long-term interest. A lot of people have lived, most of them have lived there a long, longer than we have. But it would be a very valuable thing for us as we develop that neighborhood and raise our families there just to have a little bit of extra room behind our houses. And I think it'd be a great way for the city to generate some revenue off that land right off the bat, and I think it's a win-win.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last call, anyone wishing to testify? Seeing no one jump up, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, discussion. We heard a common theme. Maybe I'll start. April, I imagine this isn't the first time you've heard that, that some of the neighbors would like to purchase that. What does that do to the Block Three, Lot One, Block Three? And maybe talk us through how that could be done cohesively, so that if, if you backed it up thirty to forty feet, but one neighbor didn't want to buy a parcel, how do we make that work?
Yeah, Mayor Fitzsim, I think you have to take into consideration the future plans of Block Three, Lot One. And I would recommend that all the neighbors purchase the same amount of property so that you keep a cohesive and much more marketable lot. So if they had all the neighbors purchase a certain amount, you wouldn't have kind of a jagged property line for that future lot. You know, after that, it's really, that would be our recommendation, but it's ultimately up to the council on how you'd like to move forward with selling. From a plating standpoint, I would recommend moving forward with the current plat as shown and come back with a replat of Block Three, Lot One, if all the neighbors decide they would like to purchase a certain amount, just so that you could still then move forward with marketing and selling the rest of the property if you so desire.
And I don't know how updated this map is, but if I look at West Bridgeport, I guess Lot One, Two, and, One, Two, Three, and Four on the western side, someone here can certainly answer that. Is that built out, or are those still vacant lots?
There's two houses, Lot One and Two are built on.
Okay.
The other three are open.
Okay. April, to your point, is, it's got to be the same distance, whether it's thirty, forty feet, whatever that is, right? We, we can probably set that. Challenge is we can't force an individual to buy the property. And so, counsel, my mind, I guess I logically think, hey, if I see twelve homes on here that want to, or that are here, if ten of them want to, and two don't, and the two are scattered in the middle, we essentially hold a small parcel that we would retain because we couldn't force them to buy it. Have we put thought into that, or how that might work?
You would have to, if there is a chunk, you would have to keep it as part of that bigger Block Three, Lot One. Otherwise, it would, you wouldn't have access to it. It would be landlocked. So you would end up with a lot with a jagged lot line.
Mayor Fitzsim, I just was quickly measuring. I think you guys can see on there that the tree line that she was referencing. So that's a, and this is a measurement off of Beacon, so take it for what it's worth. But it's approximately fifty to sixty feet, which would be kind of a make-sense line to draw, just because you go right behind that tree line, which I'm guessing is probably what they like and prefer the most, to have some protection for their homes. I, I kind of wonder if perhaps a good approach would be to, to April's point, get it approved as is, but let the neighbors work through it. I could see maybe there'd be some scenarios where, hey, you know, maybe there are two neighbors that don't want to purchase, but their neighbor next door might be willing to, and it makes an L lot. I, I mean, I think, as long as we can try to avoid spot chunks, whether it's the neighbor directly behind, or if a neighbor wants, you know, an L, or if they're willing to work out something and be able to get a unified approach, I think it, I think it is a win-win for everybody. And it, it almost looks like you can kind of draw a perfect line there right behind that row of trees if we can get every property owner to agree, or their adjacent property owners to agree to buy more than just their sixty feet. Just so there isn't, so you guys all know, you know, we try to avoid chunks that we would retain ownership of.
Question?
Yeah, sorry.
So this is zoned what?
Single-family residential.
Okay, so if you were to think of that neighborhood going in eventually in the future, and it was a jagged property line there where two or three residents didn't, that just extends the yard on the addition of the new house, the future house, would be just that. It would be a little bit of offsetting yards. So I'm not too afraid of causing that. You just have to keep the acreage appropriately, you know, measured.
Yeah, you'd probably want to keep the, and again, it's future someone else to figure out from a developer, right? But the lot width.
Yeah, someone's going to have a longer yard, and it's going to go to the edge, and you'll have, you know, offsetting. But I guess that's up to you guys in planning, but I don't see a big issue with it. If someone were to decide they wanted not to participate, but more so than buying a L-shaped yard, and then people playing in their backyard, people might be a bit concerned, not understanding that that, well, they'll know they didn't buy it, so. I think it's a good plan, and I think we should work through that fifty-whatever-foot boundary.
Yeah, I love that the community's coming together. It's kind of cool. It must be a great neighborhood to be in. And I, I guess my question to the staff would be, how would we evaluate fifty feet of land? And what would that process look like of, like, what would that actually, what would that process look like?
April, I'll jumping here, or attempt to. I think, and maybe it's a good part to work into the RFQ, if you want to pull that up. I think we leverage the broker for that. I think they know the market. They're going to be able to go out and look at vacant properties. And they're, you know, obviously, these properties don't have access right now, you know, and they're going to be the one to, to look at that and find somebody who's qualified and having done some of that work previously, and try to leverage their expertise and experience. I, I think if you find the right person, they've, it's not their first rodeo, and they've done this. And hopefully find somebody who's certified and, or has their licensure in the commercial side, because they would especially understand the value of development property, which is really what this is. It's property that would be future development property for another single-family residential development. And to your point, I think, is a super good point. I mean, whether it's these property owners or ones on the other side of it, it's just going to be a longer lot for somebody. But they're going to understand that value of it, and not us. I think we leverage them in helping to come to an agreeable amount, and then just making sure it's consistent amongst the neighbors and same amounts.
April, if we were to approve this and the replat of three came back to us, how far are we looking out? One, two, three, more?
You know, I'd like to have Carrie weigh in on that. I think it depends on how long before we can work with the residents on who would want to move forward and who would not want to move forward.
And the only reason I ask is, I prefer that we know, okay, if we go fifty feet, or fifty-five, do we lose an entire row and developers are interested of houses behind them? Just that, and I don't see five feet making that big a difference, but just that, that lot behind on that size doesn't minimize the value behind them so we can accommodate both sides still, based on how many footages we're getting.
And that, that might be a hard question to answer, because it really, the layout of whatever that future development looks like really is up to the developer. Now, we could, you know, take a look at, if you were to put two roads and some lots in and see how it lays out and get a general idea, but the value of that land really is up to the developer. And like Anna said, getting somebody on board to help evaluate that.
I think it'd just come down to having a smaller lot versus risking the development, but I just want to make sure we keep that in mind.
I had similar thoughts of, what does five or ten feet impact? Is there a cost impact? If we hold this and do the plat all at once versus approving it tonight and coming back and replating it?
Again, I would, I don't think so.
Not from a, not from a plating perspective, the only cost that there could be is surveying to re, you know, redraw the, but you're going to have that either way.
You, right, to lay out the additional property, right?
But we're doing the plating ourselves, so it's our, our own internal fees, per se. And I, I mean, I just, to echo Councilmember Meyer, I love the neighborhood kind of getting behind this. And so I think the more that we can have, you know, kind of a unified effort of similar lot sizes, similar prices, you know, obviously, if you're working with a broker, neighbors are going to make an offer, and hopefully there's some consistency there. And if you guys can kind of band together, I think that that makes our decisions easier when it's a unified approach like that. So kudos to you guys for already taking that initiative, but it, but just continuing that through with the broker, I think would make our jobs easier then.
Yeah, and that's where I want to make sure that if someone isn't, either doesn't desire or financially unable to purchase the lot behind them, that it doesn't wreck that for the rest of the neighborhood. I, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want this situation to pin a neighbor against neighbor on can it happen or not. And so to hear that we can work around maybe one or two that wouldn't purchase it is awesome. Counsel, is there a desire for a motion? I need two separate ones. One is the plat, and then one will be the RFP process. Take the plat first.
I'll make a motion to approve the plat as shown.
Motion to approve the plat as shown. It might be worthwhile that we put in the, in the motion that there's an intent to, to sell off part to the neighborhood. I don't know how we want to word that, but just ensure that the intent in the conversation here tonight certainly carries forward as part of the motion.
Yeah, maybe as a part of the motion that the intent to consider replating.
There you go.
Block Three.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any clarification on the motion needed? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. RFQ process, Rob, would you be able to pull that up? One more, just, we can walk through that. So what I see, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I'll, just to further clarify in this, so it would be a RFQ and not a RFP, so we wouldn't necessarily be looking for proposals. I think we all can agree that we're past the proposal portion of, of council wanting or staff wanting to get involved in being real estate agents. This is finding somebody to do that for us, and then letting the experts do the job of, of that process. And so really looking for somebody based on qualifications. And so what the, it essentially for you guys will be presenting a resume, portfolio of some of the work they've done, and then also offering commission rates, and then you selecting based on whoever responds, based on their qualifications. So hopefully that makes sense. It's a little bit different, but fairly similar, you know, process-wise. It's just qualifications instead of proposals.
I guess that, that was a question I was going to have is, didn't see it listed, but their commissions or fee structure, that'll be a requirement as part of their proposal?
Yeah, I think it's under, so proposed commission split. Is that they would, they would provide.
Oh, there we go.
Their proposed commission there.
Applicable information.
One point of clarification is that we are requiring that somebody be licensed in both commercial and residential, because they are, there are two different zoning classifications there. However, I, you know, when I think about it a little bit more, the single-family residential classification is vacant, developable property, which would probably be a commercial real estate agent anyways and not necessarily single-family. But maybe it's not all that important, whether you find. I think commercial is really important. If you can find somebody that has both, even better. Yeah, that's true. You could.
And that was a conversation Anna and I had previously of, you know, residential real estate agent is selling a
House.
physical house, right? I guess I'd lean more towards just the commercial, and during our vetting process, we could flush out, maybe to your point, is there residential experience there or not? At the end of the day, they're selling raw land. I would like, sorry, one more quick thing. I would like that residential exposure, and whether they have it or through a partnership that they might have, just so that, again, we can go back to Lot One, Block Three and understand the value of those break-off parcels.
Is the intent to have a Realtor come forward and represent every property here? Or does council have an interest in people piecemealing that out? And if not, do we need to specify that in this document?
Great question. I, I prefer that we leave it, that autonomy to the council. I think it's, there's enough property here that anyone, anyone and everyone's going to be interested in being a listing agent. So I don't think by opening that door, we limit someone or, you know, lose someone wanting to participate. I'd like that. I also, I see the PID's on the bottom, and I didn't look those up. But I actually have interest in retaining, at this point in time, retaining the landfill. Is, that's the intent?
Yep, yeah, we'll be, we will be required to maintain the landfill, but there's the outlots on each side of it that are a part of Outlet A PID. And I think council could retain the, the right, once you see the qualifications that come back. And let's say maybe you, there's two or three of them that you really like, then maybe you say, you get this parcel, you get this parcel. You know, you guys could, you might narrow it down to one, and you might not. And I think at that point, you could decide, do we want to have somebody represent all of it, or just portions?
Okay.
Is there a consensus on that?
Yeah.
I'm sure John would love us to sell the landfill.
His, his item's coming up under new business. Any other questions on the RFQ process? Any other questions on the RFQ process? If not, uh, we'll look for a motion on the RFQ process as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the RFQ process as presented.
I'll second that.
With a motion and a second, any further discussion?
One quick plan of clarification. So we are going to leave the commercial and residential.
As a must, that was going to be a question I had.
Would you be willing to amend your motion to remove residential?
Yes, remove it or do we want to prefer it? I guess it's my motion.
It's your motion.
Uh, we'll, we'll just for, remove it.
Will you second that yet?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Any other adjustments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Onto fee schedule, you're more than welcome to stay. Uh, but the Vikings are on right now, so. Likely down by three, maybe seven. Council will give them just a minute here. All right, next public hearing is the 2024 fee schedule.
Yes, good evening. The updates to the 2024 proposed fee schedule are included within your packets. Generally, the proposed updates are inflationary or restructure fees to recover our costs. So I'm just going to jump to the proposed utility rate fee changes because those rates impact most of our residents. I did include all of the fee schedule proposed changes within the PowerPoint. So if we do have questions at the end of the presentation, we can jump back to them. So between water, sewer and stormwater, we are proposing an overall increase of 5.26%. So for the resident that uses 12,000 gallons in 2023, they pay $177 over the course of two months. If they use the same amount of water in 2024, they would pay $186 over the course of two months. So when you break that down per month, it's a difference of $4.66. And I forgot to mention the bulk of the increase to utility rates is derived from sewer at 6.56%. In addition, in the consent agenda, you approved the utility rate study, which will provide the analysis needed to help us consider a change to our rate structure to help promote conservation. This won't affect the 2024 fees, but may have an impact on our 2025 fees and rates structure for all of water, sewer and stormwater. So looking at each fund individually, beginning with the water fund, this is a visual representation of our revenue coverage using the proposed rate increases in 2024, which we had just reviewed and estimated increases beyond 2024 from our financial management plan. Because the decision that we make in 2024 will have an impact on future years. So it's a lot of colors, charts and area graphs going on. But to boil it down, we just want to see the dark yellow line above the dashed line. Each year to indicate that we are meeting our reserve policy. We're projected to meet our reserve policy in 2024. Based on the proposed increase to water. And the utility rate study that we conduct next year will help shape this graph in years to come. Uh, again, another visual representation of our revenue coverage and this time it's for the sewer fund. We're projected to meet our reserve policy in 2024. Based on my projections, but then we get into trouble in 2025. So us conducting the utility rate study in 2024 will help shape this in future years to make sure that we are meeting our policies. And then to the stormwater fund, projected to meet our reserve policy the next couple of years. Then run into some trouble within 2026 based on my projections. But again, utility rate study will help us shape this to meet our policies in the future years. From 2025 and beyond. So apples to apples comparison, when looking at residential home in 2023, where a resident is using 12,000 gallons of water over two months. These are all the cities that do contribute to the wastewater treatment facility in St. Cloud. We're towards the bottom, just above Sock Rapids and below Wait Park. It includes both water, sewer and stormwater. So you're getting a total utility bill in each of the cities. Uh, these two graphs show our rates over time from 2011 to what is being proposed in 2024. The chart on the left is water and sewer. The chart on the right is stormwater for residential and stormwater for commercial. When you look at the chart on the left, I charted a linear line for both water and sewer. We're below it in the years 2016 to 2021. But then you can see we're playing a little bit of catch up in 2022 to 2024. I would be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding fee schedule prior to opening up the public hearing.
Council, what questions do you have on the fee schedule?
Uh, Rob, you had, in those charts, you had some large color mountains that were appearing and those were, those are projects that we have projected that are going forward for improvements or?
Yeah, so the area chart in the background of the bar chart is our estimated expenditures. And the big mountains are our capital projects. So for the sewer fund, it's the West Side Residential Project that we're going to be conducting in 2025. And then in 2027, it's the addition of a jet truck. Water fund, we're doing West Side Residential, which would impact our water fund as we're updating water mains. And it's also the addition of a water tower. And then stormwater, it's just the West Side Residential, creating that large peak.
Water pyramid. Okay, thank you.
So it includes, yeah, both operational and capital expenditures, since they both have an impact on our cash position.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the 2024 fee schedule? Please step forward. Second offer, anyone wishing to testify? Anita, it's your last option. All right, we will close the public hearing. Council, any questions on the fee schedule or the rate adjustments? I'm happy to see we're adding the utility rate study. I think that's certainly needed. We've all gotten a lot of feedback lately on that. So look for that here in 2024 and help us figure out a longer term plan. Uh, seeing no comments, questions, I would look for a motion. Motion is made to approve the 2024 fee schedule. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Just that I appreciate Rob recapping the projects. I know we've talked a lot about this at workshop and, um, but it's also something I know we all get from residents when the, when the rates go up. So, um, I think it's easier for residents if they know they're these big projects on the horizon, so.
I'd also love to see us use the term water pyramid more often. That'd be a great term to put out in the public. Uh, seeing no additional comments, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. New business, 2024 meeting schedule.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, you have a for you in your packets, the 2024 meeting schedule. We do this every year, uh, or in preparation of the next year and just, um, call out our regular meetings. We call out the workshops that we intend to have. We call out our, our special, or our commission meetings, our joint planning board and just get it out there right at the beginning of the next year. A couple dates to specifically look at or consider, um, listed in your memo would be spring break for Sartell School District. And the dates are March 25th through the 29th. So I believe the 25th is a council meeting night for us. Memorial Day of May 27th, um, would be a, a holiday that we're currently, would be a regular meeting night. Um, and then also Veterans Day. I think those were the only holidays next year unless somebody noticed anything else.
Question?
Sorry.
Have you considered a Monday night football schedule?
Uh, as soon as that comes out, I'll add that into, as a factor.
Thank you.
We could flex our, yeah, flex our meeting dates. Council, in the past, there was a point in time where we didn't schedule over spring break. Knowing that there was a likely an absence of either staff or council members. More recently, we have, uh, knowing that once we publish this, we can always cancel. Versus having something come through and having to, uh, publish that we are going to meet. I know I'll be out that week, but I would still advocate that we publish for it. Because if there is a pressing development or something, rather than having to call a special meeting, we could just carry on with that business. If there's nothing to meet about or we don't have a quorum, we can administratively cancel it. And then the other two, I would advocate that we move them to the Tuesday rather than the Monday. But again, we have the flexibility, we can publish it one time. If we need to cancel, we can, or we can adjust.
Yeah, I had concerns about asking staff to come in on holidays.
I think by contractor, actually prohibited from doing city business on holidays.
Yeah, I think we could, yeah, I don't, we won't have the meeting. We'll move it to the Tuesday.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
I won't be here.
Really?
Thanks for clarifying.
By consultant, you might be.
You'll be watching on TV every Monday.
Yeah. Council, any thoughts or objections or other ideas? Keep marches planned. When it gets closer, we'll have to see if we even have a quorum. Like we do have some flexibility on remoteness, but, and then the other two, we can move to Tuesdays and. I'll make that motion. Is there a second? Motion and second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries, Public Works Director Recruitment Process.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, um, just a public acknowledgement because now John can't escape the room. When we recognize him for his 30 years as, uh, well, I guess not all of that has been Public Works Director, but Public, Public Works employee for the city of Sartell. And formally announcing his retirement April 4th, not the 3rd. Which is ironically exactly 30 years on the dot. And so we are working through at a personnel level of, uh, timeline for the recruitment process for him, which you see on your screens there. We're working on a job profile right now. And, uh, we'll, we'll look to follow, um, this timeline in hopes of finding somebody with a little bit of crossover with John in March. Before he sets off, uh, into paradise retirement mode. Something like that. We still know his phone number, so he won't be going too far away. But he, his official last day, uh, just due to some vacation time is sometime in May, accurate? But, uh, April 4th, even if it, I have it wrong on the flyer. I don't know why I have April 3rd in my head, um, is his official last day being here full time. No approval necessary, just wanted to publicly, um, share the timeline and we'll get this out around December 20th before the holidays. Begin that recruitment process and, and John will be actively involved in that and, and, um, finalize interviews. Kind of similar process to the, the police chief, so.
Awesome, thank you. Uh, old business, we have North Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project Award.
Yeah, Mayor and members of the council, uh, for your consideration tonight is the Award of Construction for Improvements to the North Water Treatment Plant. Um, project location is, uh, on the north end of town along 27th, uh, 27th Street North, next to Oak Ridge Elementary School. Little bit of background, in 2021, 2022, we did a water treatment plant condition assessment, which identified a number of capital improvement projects, uh, over the next several years. Uh, one of those projects was the improvements to the chlorine room, which is, um, what's on your agenda tonight. In late 2022, we had some discussions at a staff level about safety. The current chlorine is stored in a gas form. These improvements will change that to a liquid form, uh, which is a safer method to store the chlorine. Anything to add on that, John or Kevin?
Well, just that when the, when the plant was built, there was no schools out there and I, you know, so there was, you know, it was farmland. So gas chlorine made all the sense, it's what we were using. Now with the school system out there, uh, it just makes a lot of sense to be safer and get rid of 2,000 pounds of gas chlorine.
I almost forgot, with us tonight is Kevin Young, who is a, a water resource engineer specialist, uh, with SEH, who has been working on this project. Um, he's here this evening to help answer any questions that you guys may have, um, with this project. Anything you would like to add, Kevin?
You also need to, uh, have a chlorine risk management plan that is updated annually and every five years you need audits. So there's some administrative requirements with gas chlorine that you, you won't have with, uh, so, so.
So in June of this year, uh, council authorized design of the, uh, improvements. In September 11th, uh, there was a plan approval and authorization to solicit quotes. So with that, quotes were received on Friday, November 17th. Um, the low quote was submitted by Minnesota Mechanical Solutions of Wait Park in the amount of $297,495. Of note, that quote was $123,550 above our engineers', um, opinion of probable construction cost. Kevin and team did a, did their due diligence and did reach out to a number of suppliers and contractors when we, um, came up with our estimate. From the time that we did that to quotes, equipment prices skyrocketed for these items as well as, um, concrete and painting costs. I think that just goes to show the continued, um, climate of bidding and especially materials. That it's unpredictable and we're not getting quotes longer than a few weeks or a few months, um, on these items. So unfortunately, the project did come in, um, over our original estimate and over budget. Uh, we did meet at a staff level with finance, Rob, um, John Hunter and myself, uh, to talk about, uh, the water budget and how we could still make this project work because we do feel it is a priority and we would like to move forward with the project. Um, in doing that, we looked at delaying a well study that was originally scheduled for 2024. And adjusting a couple of the other water priorities so that we could still make this work, uh, within the city's budget, um, financially. Of note, uh, Mayor Fitzom, I know you'd commented about the, uh, water treatment tower, uh, coming up here in the next couple of years and just projecting that out on a population wise. Uh, so Kevin and his team are currently looking at those population projections that were used in that capital improvement plan. Um, and we'll be coming back shortly after the first of the year with what that adjustment shows, um, based on current population, uh, percentage increases to see if that can also, um, be adjusted from a timeline perspective. Schedule, if approved tonight, um, construction would start early January. Um, it has to be completed, uh, by April. Um, this work needs to be done, uh, before that spring water demand. And so timing is of the essence on this one. If we don't approve it tonight, it would be delayed, uh, likely a full year in order to get it constructed. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Council, what questions do you have on the water treatment plant improvement?
April, you mentioned a well study would be pushed and some other water priorities. Is there, um, downside to pushing those out? I mean, what, what are those and what, what's the cost? What's the cost?
The trade off?
Yeah.
The well study that was proposed, that cost was split between twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five at eighty grand each year. The reason we prioritized that well study was the well replacement that was required at the North Treatment Plant, if you recall, within the last couple of years. And just knowing that that area is starting to develop, so we wanted to identify well locations so that we make sure we retain that property as that property develops. So we didn't feel that pushing that well study out a, a couple of years was going to have much of a negative fact, impact if any. You know, some of the other adjustments, one, we're, we're looking at that water tower and then Rob, can you remember what other things we were, just some other studies, there's a a south treatment plant assessment that is also budgeted for twenty twenty four. We would like to continue to move forward with that one. But just making some other adjustments to the budget. There are other north plant treatment improvements based on that assessment we did. Those, we can make some adjustments moving forward in the next couple of years as well. Rob, anything to add?
Yeah, well, and also to know too, we just looked at the reserve levels for both sewer, water and stormwater. And water does have a pretty comfortable reserve level at this point. So potentially drawing a little bit further down on that reserve level could be an option in twenty twenty four, but the bulk of it is covered by that well study. It looked like we were a hundred and twenty five thousand over budget and the well study being eighty thousand in twenty twenty four and eighty thousand in twenty twenty five. So being able to defer that will help us accomplish the overage.
Thank you.
I know it's been maybe tongue in cheek a little bit, but there's been some comments, conversation here and there about the future of the North Treatment Plant. And so I guess, you know, one of my questions would be, Counsel, are we better off? You know, prioritizing that study or the study, what it would take to stand up the south treatment plant longer term? I just, I get concerned if we're having those somewhat scuttlebutt conversations and then also having future discussions on, on work to do on the north plant. It's, at some point, we've got to make that decision longer term and thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, the north plant's going to be there a long time because without getting water main up out of that south plant to the north, it's, it's, it's just a long timeline before you're going to get enough capacity heading north out of that south plant. Definitely better water in the south plant, cheaper water to produce, but till we get some development heading north, you know, on that side of town, we can't feed from the south plant.
And that would take a full line from, from the south plant to the north plant or?
In that area, yeah, tying in somewhere up on that north end to feed that north tower.
I mean, it's beyond simply connecting something out of the, the north end of nineteenth Avenue today, right? It would be a total tear out of nineteenth or somewhere along that corridor.
Nineteenth Town Line Road, you know, it's, it's, it's out there.
And the last question I'd have is, is we, we feel confident this is the best price we get in that holding off one year or rebidding this spring when construction may be down, doesn't return a better?
We do feel this is the best price. Nothing seems to be going down, down in price. It all seems to be going up in price. Agree with that, Kevin?
One question. Was there, you told me, how many bids did you get and what was the bid coverage like?
Yeah, absolutely. So four bids were received. Low bid was Minnesota Mechanical Solutions at two hundred and ninety seven thousand, four hundred and ninety five. Second big bid was Magny at three forty six, nine hundred. Third was Shank Constructors at three sixty two, nine hundred. And Rice, Rice Lake was at four, forty eight, one sixty.
Shank actually built that plant.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Uh, look for a motion on the improvements, uh, project award.
I'll make a motion to approve the North Water Treatment Plant Improvements Award.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? That carries. Uh, item ten, Department Reports, Administration.
Mayor, members of the council, you have my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for administration? Seeing none, thank you. Finance?
Good evening. You have my report as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for finance? Thank you. Uh, Commission Updates.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, you might recall we had one planning commission vacancy and we did have two applications I sent out in my last week's update. And I believe Carrie has one interview scheduled and is still trying to schedule the second one and, and you'll see calendar invites for those. And then tonight with the commission approvals, we have a vacancy on everything Sartell. So we'll get that posted and take applications for that. We have room for a couple of spots on there, don't necessarily have to fill them, but can take applications and make a decision from there. So just two quick commission updates and we, we do still have a standing vacancy for the Regional Human Rights Commission.
Thank you. Uh, Council Committee Updates, Tim?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Jill?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Alex?
Uh, only item is, again, this year we will be doing the Santa's Helpers Gift Fundraiser for local children that are sick over the holidays. So we can donate at City Hall or reach out to myself or Nikki Sweater. And then we'll also be at the Festival of Lights on Friday, December eighth, collecting toys. And I believe fire departments there too for some of the firefighters. So come on up.
Awesome. Jed?
Nothing tonight.
I have nothing tonight either. I'll look for a motion to adjourn. All second, there's a second, all in favor? Aye, or adjourn?